The City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, January 21st, 2014. But that will ask for roll call.
Councilmember Dotson?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Burbank?
Here.
Rainey?
Here.
Swenby?
Here.
Truelson?
Here.
Abraham?
Here.
Mira Kuntz?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to the council meeting tonight. And with that, we have no changes to the agenda, so we'll look for a motion to approve as presented. Motion to approve. Motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we move on to the -- we have no other items. We move on to the financial report. And I'm going to ask for two motions here, one for the 2013 and one for the 2014. With that, we'll start with the 2013, which is $29,841 for Conservative Corpse for river cleanup, $32,895 for Wentzel Corporation for miscellaneous sump and CB repair, $191,793 for other expenditures, for a total of $250,929. Look for a motion for 2013.
Some of.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further questions there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. And now we move on to the 2014. We have $129,790 for Blue Cross Blue Shield for the January health insurance, $85,483 for other expenditures, for a total of $215,273. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Kevin to approve. Do you have a second? Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. The next item is a consent agenda item, which is minutes of meetings, permit requests, other items, all grouped into one motion. And with that, we have a one to.
Yes, I would like council to table item 2.51. We don't have -- quite have everything received at this point. We'll pull it off this agenda and bring it back at a later agenda.
Okay, so this is 2.51, so.
Yes.
Raymond.
I'd like to see that not on the consent agenda next time.
Okay.
The regular agenda for approval or disapproval.
Okay. With that change, what is the council's wishes?
So move we approve.
We have a motion to approve. With that removed, do you have a second to that?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion to approve?
Raymond.
Okay.
And who seconded this?
Greg.
Greg. We have a second by Greg. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to action items, we have.
3.3.
Yep. 3.3, 3.4, construction conditional use number C-1356, QuickTrip request to construct station at 1351 Landmark Drive. And that will go to Troy.
Good evening. QuickTrip is proposing to construct a convenience store at the northeast corner of Landmark Drive and 26th Street Northeast. The property is owned B2 Community Business District, and the ordinance does permit gas stations and convenience stores by a conditional use permit. They are proposing a 5,785 square foot structure. It would have five pump islands servicing 20 vehicles. There are 26 parking stalls proposed for the site. Access to the property would be from the north and east sides. It should also be noted that beginning the spring here, there will be left turn lanes constructed to the north to Landmark Drive, as well as a future left turn lane to the south for future development. As part of that agreement, the city approved a couple of months ago here with the county and the developer B&amp;B Development. And that'll provide the access then off of 26th Street with the left turn lane into that Landmark Drive development. The building would be constructed using a combination of brick and glass, much like the QuickTrip on Minnow Springs Road. It would have architectural metal roof. There was some discussion at the planning commission about pedestrian access. There is some concern on pedestrian access. QuickTrip does plan on constructing a sidewalk on the east and south sides of their site. That does not make a connection to our trails that we have on Cedar Avenue. The developer is agreeable to doing either a bike path or a sidewalk in connection with QuickTrip, but they'd like to do it at the time that that lot is developed. And that would provide then access to our system through the intersection of Cedar Avenue and having pedestrians and bicyclists cross at Cedar Avenue to be able to access QuickTrip that way. We did have a public hearing at planning commission. We had no objections from any of the neighbors. So staff would recommend approval of this conditional use permit as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council?
Got a question.
Kevin.
So, right now it's up in the air if it'll be sidewalk or trail. It's not required for a sidewalk or trail. At a minimum, we'd like to see a sidewalk there, but preferably, you know, a bike path would accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists. So a sidewalk, though, that's their responsibility. If it's a trail, that would be our responsibility to maintain it. That would be -- if it's part of our trail system, I think we have maintained trails in the past, yes. I guess we've got our -- our trail system is on the south side of 26th Street, and I would rather see a sidewalk be put in on the north side. I don't see -- I'd rather not see a duplication of trail there.
Thank you, Raymond. Kevin, Raymond.
Is there a car wash included in this facility?
There is not a car wash.
No car wash, okay. I couldn't find it in the print, but you know, I was just wanting to.
I guess, Troy, I do agree with Kevin, is that we do have the trail system on the south side of 26th, and we'd just use this for pedestrian access from Cedar and not across 26th at this point. So, you know, I'd prefer it to be pedestrian, a cyclical system.
But if it is QuickTrip's, then they will be responsible to keep it clean, not us.
Correct.
Questions from the council?
Troy, I think you mentioned that eventually that sidewalk or trail will go from the QuickTrip property all the way to the west to Cedar Avenue, right?
That's the point.
Currently, there's a bituminous trail on the east side of Cedar Avenue. I guess in my opinion, it makes sense that it'd be a bituminous path from that corner of Cedar over to the QuickTrip site, except for concrete sidewalk. Right? Is that what we're talking about, a connect on there?
Yeah. I mean, you certainly can stipulate whether or who maintains that. I guess if it's a bituminous surface for a bike trail, you can accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists. And if you want, you can stipulate who does the maintenance on that little stretch there. It's not part of our trail system. It's not on our plan. So this would be in excess of that. And I think that would give you the right to say if they want to put that in, that that would be something that they would have to maintain.
Right. Because that trail will be on their property, will not be within the right-of-way of 26th Street, correct?
Well, it could very well be in the right-of-way. There is a lot of utilities there. A lot of it's going to depend on where it's going to fit construction-wise. There's a possibility it could be in the right-of-way, but it may also be on their own property through an easement.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve as presented?
I just think that based on the six conditions recommended by the planning commission, there's no mention of the trail here. I think we need to have a condition that addresses the trail.
Right.
Instead of having -- so.
Except that, but I don't think we should have a -- I'd see it just a sidewalk for QuickTrip at this point, since we have a trail on the south side. I'm not in favor of putting another trail there right now.
So basically, as presented, it does have a sidewalk, correct? Troy?
For -- QuickTrip would be constructing a sidewalk for the length of their property.
Right.
Okay, there is another lot in between QuickTrip and Cedar Avenue. And again, the developer has -- is agreeable to extending that to Cedar Avenue at the time that the lot is developed.
When the lot is developed, not now.
That is their intentions.
Right, okay.
Could we just ask, the developers are presenting, you have a trailer sidewalk, what their preferences?
I guess we would prefer to have it a trail, but you don't have to call it a trail. It's just the surfacing, and we'd be happy to own it and take care of it once it's built.
Will you know preference if it's concrete or bituminous?
I'd rather have it, you know, blacktop, I guess, because that's what connects to the existing path. Otherwise, you're going from, you know, blacktop to cement.
And like a 10-foot wide or 5-foot wide?
Yeah, a little bit wider would be better, you know. So as wide as the path is now that's up there, it would be nice to have it that wide too, just to -- because I believe there's going to be people that are going to want to get the QuickTrip that way.
On bikes or walking?
Yeah, yeah.
Raymond.
I would be -- I'm not willing to build another trail, since we have an excellent trail on the south side. To be part of that, if they want a sidewalk, then I have no problems with that. But right now, I'm not willing to put another trail on the north side of 26th Street, you know.
Raymond, this is a developer cop.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
The state's not paying for it.
No, I know, I understand. That's what I want.
The developer's maintaining it too, so I guess.
That's right. If they maintain it, then fine.
Yeah, I wouldn't -- I wouldn't be against it if it's a private trail. The only concern I have is we've got that one private trail that we get calls on in the wintertime because we don't maintain it. And I don't want another situation where we're getting phone calls on a -- on another trail that, you know, it's not our responsibility.
Okay, we do have a motion to approve it as presented with either sidewalk or trail on their property.
For their property, right.
So, now the chair will look for a motion to second that motion. Just a.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
My name's Wade Dumont with QuickTrip out of La Crosse, and I didn't know what the official procedure was to try to interrupt, so please forgive me. I didn't know what I should be doing there. We're okay with sidewalk or a trail. I would ask one, maybe to defer to the city engineer, because this -- the right-of-way in this area does narrow as it approaches the drive, the street intersection with Landmark. And so it may not be wide enough, depending on how wide the bike trail should be. So just that comment. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. So that -- the recommendation is to defer to the engineer, city engineer to look at the width. So with that, we do.
And I'm fine with it being up to the discretion of the property owners and Troy. If they figure out a way that they can best utilize the space, I think it's fine. I don't think we need to.
Okay. Well, I'm looking for a second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Now, any further discussion? And I see we've had it pretty much discussed, so.
So make sure I have the motion correctly to approve as presented with the six conditions, either a sidewalk or a trail on their property.
Right.
Seven, seven conditions, because the seventh condition is a trail condition.
Maintained by the property.
And maintained by.
Because there were six conditions in the packet, and the seventh one would be the trail one.
Either trail or sidewalk to be determined by the city engineer.
Okay.
But I'd like that trail to be a private trail.
Yes.
So are we saying it is on private property?
On private property.
No, no, it's just maintained by the property owners.
On right-of-way though, isn't it?
Well, there is, there is right-of-way there, but then you can stipulate, if it's on private property, that's different than if it's in the right-of-way.
Okay.
If there's, if there's not room on private property, then I would support a sidewalk, not a trail.
Okay.
That keeps us totally out of that.
Okay, so the seventh stipulation state would state to be determined by the city engineer, and if it is on private property, either way, it would be maintained by the property owners. Is that correct?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I have no desire to put a trail in the right-of-way.
That acceptable as a, as a second to the motion?
Yeah, if whatever goes in there, as long as we're not responsible for maintenance, I, it's fine with it.
Whatever fits.
Okay, so we do have a -- have you got that, Chris?
I hope so.
Okay, Dave, you got a question?
I was just going to say, this will be our fifth QuickTrip in the city limits.
Five.
Five. I don't have any doubt that they're going to be a fantastic neighbor that they have already been, and they're going to continue to be. So I have no qualms over the discussion regarding sidewalk or trail. They'll get it squared away. We'll be happy with it.
Okay.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
One other thing, and this is going to be more of an engineering question from our end as well. We have our pond adjacent to the current right-of-way, and there's no room on the private property for -- we've got a retaining wall and a pond that would infringe within where that sidewalk potentially would go if it was on private property. So it just may be a question on, I don't know what, how close we are capacity-wise with that stormwater pond. I just can't speak to that. So if we have to make that pond smaller to allow for the sidewalk on private property, it may be an issue.
Okay. Kyle?
I believe that the sidewalk or trail, whatever we settle on there, will be on county right-of-way. And it'll just be with a right-of-way permit and looking at what's, what's there now with utilities. So it'll, it'll end up being on the right-of-way like most sidewalk is.
Okay. Great.
I'm probably more concerned, not so much about the sidewalk, as a crosswalk there once a new intersection is put in.
Yeah.
A crosswalk.
From the trail.
From the trail on the south side.
Right to the north side.
To the north side.
Walking across to get the QuickTrip.
Because we've had issues.
Across 26th.
Across 26th Street, yeah.
No, there will not be a crosswalk across there.
There will not be a crosswalk there.
That's not the plan. Is that correct?
There will not be a crosswalk at Landmark Drive.
It's going to happen with all those kids at the soccer fields running over to QuickTrip for a gatorade.
And that's why the sidewalk is being planned here, is to direct them where the crossing is at Cedar Avenue.
That's a long ways.
They're still going to run across.
That sounds good in principle, but that's not, that's not where they're going to go. And I understand. I don't think we want to encourage a crossing at, at Landmark Drive. In fact, the median will be constructed so that there will be a median across at that intersection, allowing for a left turn there. So actually, the improvements that are being done on that intersection for the left turn lanes at Landmark Drive will discourage, to some degree, pedestrian traffic, just because there will be a median across there, except for right where that left turn is going in.
Which is existing at this point now.
Correct.
There's no turn.
There is no turn there, but there is a median there now.
There would be an opening cut into that to allow left turn.
Right.
Then a year from now, we'd be back asking us to spend thousands to put a crosswalk in.
Well.
Of course.
I just concern, I agree with Kevin. I just have a concern of running across here.
The bottom line is that if we put something there, we're going to be open to piss and traffic across there whether we want it or not.
Well, and this, this is county right-of-way as well, so it's not just a city decision here either.
They are looking at traffic stuff.
We do have a motion and a second with the seventh stipulation to be maintained, the sidewalk to be maintained by the property owners. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to continue, and have you work with Kyle to get that resolved.
Thank you. If they need to report back to us, I'd like to know that, if that.
Yeah, get an update.
Update on that.
Right.
Can we ask Mr. Dumont what the timeframe is for the construction of the store? What the construction's date? Is it this year, next year?
It's planned right now to be this year. Last, the schedule is being formulated right now. Last I saw, it was proposed to be started in July, but a lot of that will depend on the construction schedule of the three-quarter access on, on the county road.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote on that on a roll call.
Oh, yes.
That's an ordinance.
Okay. Councilmember Dotson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Swenby?
Aye.
Truelson?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
All members vote aye.
Thank you. Next item is conditional use number C-1358, Percol Gas Incorporated to construct gas tanks at 204 Minnow Springs Avenue. And again, we'll go to Troy.
This is a request by Percol Gas to add some more capacity for propane storage. They're proposing four 45,000 gallon propane tanks at their property at 204 Minnow Springs Road. The property is owned I-1 Light Industrial, and the ordinance does permit propane storage in those that are, those tanks that are over 12,000 gallons are permitted by conditional use. They currently have four 30,000 gallon tanks, and they're proposing to add four additional tanks, and these would be 45,000 gallon tanks. The dimensions are actually quite similar to the 30,000 gallon takes. They would just be larger in diameter. Minnesota rules state that an environmental assessment worksheet shall be completed if you're going to construct over 100,000 gallons of storage. The MPCA would be the responsible governmental unit for completion of the EAW. Due to the environmental requirements, the applicant will only be able to install two tanks immediately to stay under that threshold. And once the environmental review is completed by the MPCA, the applicant could install the other two tanks, assuming no further study is needed. The applicant is proposing to construct the concrete supports for all four tanks. With this request, all four tanks are proposed to be delivered on-site. If the MPCA allows the west two tanks to be set, but not piped in until after the EAW will do that. If they do not, that'll allow them to be, if the, if the MPCA does not allow them to have them set, they will be stored outside, outside the flood fringe. So they're looking to construct the cradles and everything for all four. They're permitted to do two of the tanks. The other two is still up to the MPCA whether they'll allow them to be placed in the cradles, but not hooked up and have propane put in them. If they don't go along with that proposal, then the tanks would have to be stored on-site. It is in a flood plain, so they'd have to be stored outside the flood plain. The fire department requires the tanks be a minimum of six feet apart and 75 feet from the property lines, and those are being met by this proposal. They do have a six-foot chain link fence around the site, and there would be bollards around the tanks. It is, again, in the flood fringe, and so the bottom of the tanks would need to be one foot above the regulatory flood elevation, which the four existing takes are, and these would propose, be proposed to be at that height as well. We did have a public hearing. We had no opposition to it. A lot is going to depend on what the MPCA rules on whether those tanks actually sit in the cradles or not. And they will have to do an EAW to have all four tanks filled with propane. So staff would recommend approval as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from the council? Raymond.
I just got a question for Greg a minute, if he could come to the microphone, if he would. My first question, have you visited with the neighbors, Hubbardman, and they, they understand what you're doing there?
Excuse me, could he sign in too, please?
Personally visited with them.
Could you sign in, please?
Sign in, sign in your.
Sign your name, please.
Down there, sign in the paper down there.
Sign onto the paper.
Oh. I have a question. Have you visited with QuickTrip and Hubbardman?
No, I had assumed that they got the same.
Notice.
Mailings that I received. I was under that assumption. Hope that's correct.
Yep. Everyone within 350 feet of property got notified.
And when will MPCA come out with their decision on the other two?
Well, that can take up to six months.
Six months.
To do the study. But we're doing some work behind the scenes there, and there's a, it could be up to a different interpretation of that rule, the way it's written.
Okay.
Propane is not called out in that, requiring that survey. It lists some other gases, but so we've got some work to do on that part, trying to get that figured out.
Why would you buy two and no, maybe never will be?
Because the price, well, why would I buy two extras?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Well, a little bit of background, they're shutting down the coaching pipeline, which comes down out of Edmonton, Canada. It feeds 40% of the propane coming into this state. We're going to lose that next year. It's limping along yet this year, but next year it's gone. So I think within about three months, you aren't going to be able to find a propane tank. And there's going to be a big, long waiting list, and I'm trying to be a little bit proactive and get these things in here, because I fully expect to get approval from the MPCA once we fill out this survey. So we want to be ready to go. It's 20, 27, 20, 20 to 30 hours wait for a load of gas right now. It's just terrible. Price of gas has been going through the roof, and I can't imagine what next year is going to bring.
What's the reason for shutting down that pipeline, not bringing propane?
They're going to reverse the flow of it. They're going to pump a fluid up to the tar sands of Canada that they mix with that heavy crude oil, so they can pump it. It's so heavy, they can't pump it.
Oh, okay.
They've got a 10-year commitment, full capacity on that pipe. And propane's been hit and miss, you know. About every three, four years, we have corn drying. The winters are sometimes warm, you know, it's not, it's, you can't bank on it being a full flow. So I guess I can't blame that pipeline for changing the direction and getting out of the propane business. But I wish, wish they would have got something in place before they did that and just, the whole industry's in an uproar right now. With this cold spells affecting 22 states, you know, it's, it's, it's a bad deal. We're, we're short on gas, so that's why we're doing this.
Okay. Dave?
I think you answered it, Greg. My question was going to be in regards to what's going on in the propane world that necessitated increasing your capacity, but you just addressed it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Not a question, but I, when we were involved, we had 230s where I was in charge of, we had 230,000. And at that time, we had four explosions, fires in town, four different companies, because people.
You had what?
Four, four different explosions of companies had fires back in those days. They didn't want to handle propane, you know. And that was just smaller tanks, you know, type of thing.
At Wangers, you had four?
No, we didn't, but the next door, the whole shed up, and there was some real bad situations with propane. That's, you know, it's, we had 230s.
Yeah. Well, I can assure the council that this ball plant is going to be state of the art. It's above and beyond what's called for in NFPA 58. The fire department loves it. In fact, when we did our last update, the, the local fire department had the state fire marshal come down and tour our plant and.
No, I've been back there. Touring good.
It's all, if there's anything for safety-wise that we can put on there, it's on there.
Just driving up and looking, and I could see that.
Trying to keep it up.
Great.
Make a motion.
Great.
Make a motion, I'm going to go ahead.
You can second.
Okay. We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm going to call it, Greg. So with that, any further comments or questions from the council?
Motion by?
Kevin.
Second by Greg.
By Nate.
Motion by Nate, second by?
Kevin. Already give it to Greg?
Need a roll call?
Guys, go slow for me.
With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That last one, I really looked at my agenda here, and it was not an ordinance. It was a conditional use, so. Now we move on to resolutions, 5-14, sponsoring agency in the Transportation Alliance program, and that will go to. And that will go to.
Corky.
Corky.
Hello? You see the memo in front of you there. We applied back in November for a TAP grant, the Transportation Alternative Program grant. But the MinDOT is the approving agency here locally, that's a federal grant. And we applied in a letter of intent back in November and MinDOT approved and asked us to apply for a full grant. And so that's what we're doing now at this point. What you'll see in there, it's a 2016 grant. And the amount is, that we put in for is almost identical to the legacy grant with the exceptions of engineering, contingency, benches, some of the amenities that go along with the trail. And then there's a 20% matching part with this grant if it's accepted. And, and you'll see in the memo to you is that we've asked that the legacy grant would be used for our matching portion. If that was not accepted, or we do not receive the legacy grant, and then we'd be going for other sources of grants through other, Otona Foundation or wherever else it may be. It'd be two years out. We'll know this answer here within the next month or two from the legacy grant, what we've received there. And so we can make that determination at that point. But this one is due the 31st, so we need to get it in to see if that does happen. Because two things could happen with the legacy grant. The best thing, of course, we'd receive the entire amount. And if that happened, we would pull this grant request at that time. If we receive partial grant from the legacy grant, then we'll try to leverage that money towards this grant if this grant would get approved. And with that, it asks for two resolutions, one for the sponsoring agency and one to that we're responsible for maintaining the trail once it is built, just like the other grants that are, and we're put in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? With the first one is five dash 14, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now we move on to the five, six dash 14 of the, agreed to maintain the facility. What is the council's wishes?
Moved, approved.
We have a motion by Greg to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now moving down to resolution seven dash 14, accept feasibility report for 2014 Street and Utility Project. And that will go to Kyle.
Good evening. Per City Council Resolution 127-13 ordered a feasibility report for improvement to Mound Street from Selby to Hilltop, Hilltop from Mound to Linwood, Linwood from Hilltop to Meadowview Lane, and Meadowview Lane from Linwood to Jeffrey. This is the area surrounding the school in the southwest, the elementary school. And then in addition to that, we're having some issues with sewer on 16th Street Northeast. The street needs to be repaired as well, so that's included in this. And then back, I believe in August, the council received a petition for improvement to, or to order a feasibility report for the alley behind Snap Fitness and Godfathers, be west of Cedar Avenue. We included that in this feasibility report also. We think that it'd be appropriate to include that in the overall project if it goes forward. And then we also looked at, and the overlays are not assessed, but the, the list of overlay streets proposed is in front of you as well. So the report covers the improvements. Mound, Linwood, and Meadowview Lane are proposed for a full mill, full width mill. They've been overlaid at least twice in the past and need more treatment. Hilltop would be a complete removal of the pavement and excavating for new base. We cored those streets and Hilltop does not have any aggregate underneath the asphalt. We've checked out the water main, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer. And we have determined that other than 16th Street Northeast, those utilities are in good shape. One thing to note is we will be doing spot repair of curb. We will not be repairing any driveways unless they are affected by curb removal. So most driveways will not be replaced with this project. The curb is in relatively good shape. Because of the different improvements proposed on page eight of the feasibility report, we came up with different prices per foot. Mound Street came in at $16.32. Hilltop came in at $48.41 per foot. And that's because there's a considerable amount more work proposed. Linwood and Meadow Lane came in at $17.64, very similar to Mound Street. 16th Street Northeast came in at $75.06. Our current maximum is $52, so the maximum would apply in that case. And the alley came in at $28.25. The total project improvement cost is $579,444.82 is what we're estimating at this time. 11% engineering is charged with the project and the city pays for 50% of the street costs. The schedule would be accepting the, if provided everything goes forward as planned, excepting the feasibility report today. And then ordering or holding the neighborhood meeting on February 25th and then holding the public improvement hearing on March 4th. With bid opening in April and construction complete by the end of August. We'd want to be done prior to school starting, of course. And then holding the assessment hearing and getting that on the taxes for the 2015. And we do find this to be cost-effective and feasible and recommend proceeding with the project.
Thank you, Kyle. Raymond?
That February 25th neighborhood meeting, is that just going to have one issue then? You said February 25th?
At, at this time, we've got one, two more feasibility reports. One will be later tonight and then.
But that date has been picked, February 25th, for a neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And that'll be for all of these that you just mentioned?
The alley was to Cedar Avenue between 18th Street and Oakdale, is that blacktop now?
It's a mixture.
Yes. Well, I know, I just wondered if it is even blacktop, that's why I was.
It's, it's a mixture of blacktop and concrete.
Okay.
It is in disrepair.
Any other questions from the council? Colonel, entertain a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving down to miscellaneous, another feasibility report for Mineral Springs Parkway, and back to Kyle.
Good evening. We also looked at the feasibility of reconstructing Mineral Springs Parkway from Cherry, the end of Cherry Street, which is essentially the southern entrance to Mineral Springs Park up to Mineral Springs Road, past Ridge Road and up to Mineral Springs Road. The original back of the napkin estimate on this was for $520,000. The, we evaluated the project with putting in a narrower street. It would be 12-foot lanes with curb and gutter and the addition of a bituminous trail connecting Mineral Springs Road to the existing trail on the north side of Mineral Springs Park. It would include some storm sewer installation, trail construction, as I mentioned, any driveway replacement, however, there are very few on this stretch. The preliminary cost came in at $643,000, so about $123,000 more than originally thought. We are recommending that we, I should back up a second. There's, this is largely a city cost. The assessments, the assessable portion is very small. On the letter, I showed assessments of $139,603. I wanted to note that a large portion of that assessment is to the park and to the city. So a low portion of this is being assessed. Because of the higher than anticipated costs, we are recommending that this project be tabled until a future time.
Thank you. So basically, Chris, we do not have to act on this, other than to table it?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll look for a motion to table. Motion to table by Raymond, second?
This is a question. Kyle, is there any reason to go out for bids and see what, what kind of bids we get? Maybe it comes back lower than the estimate?
It's, it, it likely would come lower than the estimate. We do try to be higher than, you know, we, we don't want to be the low bidder. I don't expect this to come in considerably less. The reason being, it's a heavily bituminous intensive project and the prices we've been seeing on bituminous, we don't expect to come down for a number of reasons. Oil prices and limited number of bidders. So I'm just looking quick here. We used $75 a ton for that bituminous. You know, that's $100,000 estimated cost. We don't expect that to come down. What, what we would like to do, or what we will do, is look at the house on the east side serving that with sanitary sewer. It currently is on a septic system and see if we can work with a couple of property owners to make that happen. We could take it out to bids and try. I expect that the, the answer will be it still came in too high.
Any thoughts of when you would bring it back to us?
Possibly next year. You know, we've, we budgeted $100,000 for assessments of that 520. And 420 would be from local, from general fund. So we just wanted to make up the difference in the general fund with the budget for next year.
I guess, I just, I mean, I have concerns with this street. I think this street's been in the CIP ever since I, eight years ago when I got in council and keeps on getting pushed back and back. And in my opinion, this is a pretty heavily traveled street for pedestrians that go down to the park and stuff. So I guess, I don't want to see us every year pushing this project back another year because it just keeps on getting more expensive. So I guess I'm going to go out for bids and see what the prices are or be pushed off for another year. But we need to do this road eventually because it's a very important entrance into that park down there and it's heavily traveled.
It's never got curb and gutter either. Terrible, I had to get some patching done.
There is a motion to table that takes precedence, but I will allow the conversation to continue and then ask for the motion again. So Nate, you had a question?
Well, my biggest question would be is, you know, how much, how much time and effort are we putting into just patching it right now? How much are we having to do every year just to keep the road passable?
I can't answer that honestly. I don't think it's, it's not to the point where it's so bad that it's really causing us a lot of problems. You know, it's fairly limited patching. The comment about the pedestrian traffic, I was out there for an hour or so earlier this year and around five, six o'clock in the evening and there were a lot of people using that for connecting into the park. So, you know, that's.
Raymond?
Just a question, Kyle, with long-range planning, we talked about Mineral Springs Park. Why Corky's here, that, you know, it really needs some work, that road. Should a guy consider doing the park with some of that rider out that way is what I, because it's, it really is. We had talked about a long-range planning, just boosting that up a little bit, the park itself. It's kind of needs some help, you know, and the road and the parking lot, should we consider looking at that?
We were looking at, in the design, improving the entrance to Mineral Springs Parkway from the park by the horseshoe pits. And then we're also looking at the parking situation there to see if we could optimize that. It's a little hap, haphazard as, because of the shape. So we had included some costs for improvements to that entrance and then, and then trying to give more space to the horseshoe pits.
Yeah, horseshoe are all parking on the lawn and that's why it plays for.
And, and one other note, that what we did figure, this narrow road would not allow for any parking on the roadway from Mineral Springs Road to the park. So there would be no, it would be posted, no parking the entire length of this project.
There is a motion to withdraw it and to table it, so what is the council's wishes?
I'll remove my motion to table, go out for bids and see what looks like I agree with that somewhat. I'll remove my motion.
So what, what you're asking for is that you would like to have a, it sent out the bid, is that correct?
See the prices come back out?
Yeah, I agree with, and I'd like to remove my motion to table.
Because we always can reject the bid, so.
I agree.
Okay. Kyle?
We would be holding the neighborhood meeting and the improvement hearing before we went out for bids, so it would give you another opportunity to consider it before advertising also.
Okay.
Concern we may well have then, if, when we do that, we are going to further limit the parking in an already fairly limited situation, correct?
Yes.
So if we do the roadway, I think we probably do need to look at the park and figure out a way to expand its parking if we're going to lose some of that.
On the roadway, it's only, the only in the corner house has cars that park on the street.
Yeah.
There's, there's currently no parking on the street, is there Corky?
I don't know how much.
They do.
So they line up in the whole hillside, you know. Dave's got to come, and it's, it's got to be, you know, curbed, I think, as well. So only the big parking lot down below, you park across the bridge and you walk up. Not as many people parking across the street, but they maybe had reasons to park across the street a few years back than they do now. They can carry their coolers in. Plus we looked at a little bit of redesign of parking lot, which helped that intersection as well.
Thank you. What is the council's wishes?
I'll move to remove my.
Do we have a motion to go out for bids?
Okay.
Do we have that motion?
No, we don't have anything.
Take that motion.
We have a motion by Nate to go out for bids.
Second.
Second by Brent Swenby, any further discussion?
I'm going to have to recuse myself from this vote as I'm one of the majority landowners on Mineral Springs Parkway.
Thank you, thank you. With that being said, any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved to go out for bids. Kyle?
And this would follow the same schedule as the, the other one. We would schedule a time on the 25th of February for the neighborhood meeting.
Thank you, thank you. With that, we do have one more item is the 3.72, addresses within the Steel County Fairgrounds, free fairgrounds. And that will go to Troy.
The city, county, and fair board have been working on a comprehensive addressing map for the fairgrounds property. A few of the buildings on the site have addresses, but a majority of those structures on the, on the site do not. And working with Jim Gleason and the fair board, all private drives within the fairgrounds would be named as well as all buildings would be assigned an address. And then there's an attached map here showing what the street names and the addresses would be. The goal of assigning addresses to all of these buildings is to provide higher level of public safety. By having appropriate address on each building, it allows for public safety to quickly find the desired building. In addition, it would help with record keeping in the future. Once approved by the council, staff would send the addresses out to our list to notify. It includes public utilities, the post office, and a number of other different agencies. And all the parties will use these addresses going forward. and all the parties will use these addresses going forward. It was, it was noted that there are two buildings there by the Curling Club and not just the one, and so we would need to add another address there. So I would recommend that we approve the addresses for the fairgrounds with that addition that we'll, we'll assign a second address to that other building.
Okay. I also noticed that you have the Muckel Building and the Four Seas Building with the same number.
And that is how one is off Cedar Avenue and one is off Elm, and they have been using those currently. So those are existing addresses.
So the Muckel Building would be off from Cedar Avenue?
Correct.
Interesting, because I thought that the west side of the road would be even numbers and the east side would be odd numbers, which.
Right. Those are, those were the existing addresses that we were.
I, I understand, but, yeah. According to our policy, there would be odd, even, east, west, north, south, et cetera, Questions from the council?
What were you talking about? Are you saying, are you saying, no signs then, no post signs then, or just, they're going to put numbers in each building then, is that how that will be?
I'm assuming that the, the buildings would be having how, numbers on them, is that correct, Corky?
Yeah, so the buildings would have address numbers on them, and then.
No sign, no signpost then, like, street signs at all then?
Yep, they would also have street signs.
But they said there are no costs to us, so we will pay for those.
That's, that would not be a city cost.
Oh, they're going to pay for those too then?
That would be from the fair.
Oh.
Okay. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. I would like to add, with that extra building having the, the number addressed.
Next to the Curling Club.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Now we move on to public comment, and if anyone wishes to speak on items not on the agenda, please come to the microphone and sign in. I ask you to keep it to two minutes on items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to council comment, and we'll start with Nate.
Nothing to add.
Greg?
Nothing to add.
Dave?
Nothing to add tonight.
Kevin?
Nothing tonight.
Brent?
Nothing.
Raymond?
Just wish the mayor safe travel next week.
Yes, and to the mayor now.
Just a comment, the Blandon Foundation has been in town today to at least promote a program that they've got going on. They have a week-long opportunity for residents of the city of Oatana to attend a Blandon Leadership Program in Grand Rapids. This gives twenty-four individuals from Oatana an opportunity to go up and talk about Oatana and try and make recommendations to improve the community. Those applications are online from at Blandon. You have till February tenth. It's a five-day, all-expense-paid by Blandon, so if anybody's interested, they can either contact me or go to Blandon on the website and apply for it.
And if anyone is interested, I think it would be a very good opportunity, so.
It's a great opportunity. I had the privilege of attending it back twelve years ago. It's a great program.
Thank you, Tom. Chris?
I just had a couple of things. Just a reminder for folks that we have a grandparents and grandchildren ice fishing event Saturday, January twenty-fifth, at one-thirty to three-thirty. You can drop in anytime, it's at Lake Chase. It's free for all kids and senior place members, two dollars for adults who are not senior place members. So it'll be, there'll be prizes for the largest fish and for all kids who visit all stations, so fun and exciting event for that. Our first coffee with the council is scheduled for Saturday, February eighth, eight-thirty to nine-thirty at the Hy-Vee Deli. So come visit with council and myself, and it's an informal setting where you can bring your concerns and questions to us, and we'd be happy to listen. And that's all I had.
Thank you. And I don't have anything myself, so we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Raymond, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
You should.